I'd like to call orders to get city council meeting Monday, May 23, 2016, at 7:00 PM. A ruling prayer for the elections tonight.
Thank you for allowing me to be here and I would ask that you do your prayer for the place. Spirit of life and love, as we gather here tonight in this place to consider our community, we want and need to pause and reflect. We need to be grateful, not only for our lives, but for this day and for the gifts that you've given to us. Thank you. Thank you for our community with all its blessings, opportunities, people that we so enjoy. We thank you for those who serve to make it even a better place to live, work, and shop. For our law enforcement, medical, fire personnel. For this elected body and the challenges they face. I ask for your presence, Lord, to govern and guide, that they will be able to listen to those who differ, be able to compromise, be able to work in a united way. We often cannot do these things without you, Lord. So may your spirit have liberty in governing all that takes place in not only this group's discussions, debates, but in their hearts and in their lives. I thank you for their willingness to be here, for their work that will be offered here tonight. I pray that you will bless them and may they be a blessing to each other and to our North Camp community. And I pray these things in your precious and holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here? Here? Here?
Here.
Here?
Here?
Here.
All right, thank you. May I motion in section two to approve as the Senate, the mayor's report proceeds April 2016. A financial statement February 2016, won't that move?
Motion to approve as we debate.
Second? Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you very much. At this time, we will accept comments from the public. A few rules, a five-minute time limit. Once you have reached the time limit, you'll be asked to return to your seat. There will be no back and forth, question and answer, or debate during the public speaks portion. If you do have questions, concerns, you want to speak directly with us, you can wait until after the meeting and we will all be here to address those questions and concerns. And I ask that you state your name and address before you make your comments. So at this time, if you've reached your desk, council, please step forward.
Melanie J. Roll, U.C. Way, 30th Street, North Camp, Ohio. Our topic is expanded CRA tax abatements. Summit Place, seven new homes, forgiveness of the building property. Tax 100% for 15 years. A loss of approximately 105,000 school taxes for 15 years. Sanctuary brand, 16 million assisted living complex forgiveness of the building property. Tax 50% for 12 years. A loss of approximately 1 million school taxes for 12 years. Council says schools not receiving the tax now so will not miss getting the tax. Fact, schools in dire need of money, they will miss the tax. This is an opportunity for much-needed income to prevent further teacher layoffs and possible new school levies. Council says the schools will get 6,000 per student stipend from the state from seven houses on Summit Place. So no need for taxes. Fact, not true. The per student stipend from state is $2,655. There may be no children or they may go to St. Paul or Central. Cost to educate each child in North Camp schools per year is $9,403, well short of any state stipend. Council says the schools are getting tax on the land. Fact, tax on the land compared to tax on the building is miniscule. It's a joke to even say this. Council says the schools aren't losing money because of the CRA. Fact, the schools are losing 12 to 15 years of tax dollars in excess of approximately over a million dollars during these years. What a silly statement. Of course the schools are losing money. Council says the developer assisting assisted living complex will give the schools a gift in lieu of 12 years of property taxes. Fact, will there be a gift every year for 12 years or only one gift? What gift could possibly offset schools losing approximately 85,000 a year or approximately 1 million over the 12 to 15 years? Fact, it appears by passing the expanded CRA, council is serving developers and not the residents. And most importantly, the little residents, the schoolchildren. Schools are the heartbeat of the city and the reason people come to live here. Keep our schools financially strong by ensuring they receive all tax dollars residents pay. Please exclude Summit Place and the 16 million assisted living complex from the CRA. They are both going to be completed whether or not the developer receives the CRA. These comments are from Meredith Lockman. She's attending a graduation tonight for her granddaughter and asking to be given these remarks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck Ossoff, 1307 Frederick Street, South Texas, North Camp, Ohio. A couple corrections for you, Melanie.
Okay.
The abatement for the brand, that's 127,500 a year times 12, that's a million, $530,000. And then this gift that you talked about, you mentioned, it isn't a gift. Those are taxes that are property due to the school. All right. I'd like to recite the children's story of Chicken Little, that we remember from our youth as a learning aid to the current discussion on the proposed expansion of the city CRA. Chicken Little woke up one morning and went for a walk in the pound where she lived. While walking, an acorn fell from the top of a tree and hit her on the head with a pumpkin. "The sky is falling, the sky is falling," she yelled. "I must run and warn the king." On the way, she ran into Henny Penny. "Chicken Little, what's wrong?" asked Henny Penny. "The sky is falling, the sky is falling. We must run and warn the king," cried Chicken Little. "I will run, Lou," said Henny Penny. So Chicken Little and Henny Penny ran together. And so on and so on, until Chicken Little, Henny Penny, Lucy Lucy, and Turkey Lurking all ran together. Soon they ran into Foxy Loxie. "You will be safe in my den," said the clever Foxy Loxie. "You can hide in there and I will run and tell the king." So Chicken Little, Henny Penny, Lucy Lucy, and Turkey Lurking followed Foxy Loxie to his den. They were never to be heard or seen again. The moral of the story is that when something happens, one should not believe whatever first comes to one's mind to be the cause or believe the first possible option to be true. The story of Chicken Little teaches us to think before jumping to conclusions. How can this council conclude that North Camp is so blighted that the sky is falling? Investment in North Camp is not discouraged as the statute requires of the creation of a CRA. The Main Street trailer park that has been described as blighted several times up here and worthy of the abatement up there did not discourage investment in that area. That is evidenced by the fact that Wiley Auto Parts and CBS Pharmacy both built on property abutting that area trailer park. The property tax abatement given for Northridge Place, the 40-unit apartment complex built on the former side of the trailer park was unconscionable. The abatement 100% for 15 years amounts to $59,129,000 and $20,150 per year. Will total, will close the total close to $1 million over the term of 15 years. The property may be residential in nature, but it is an investment property that will result in diversion of needed funds to the North Camp City Schools. The North Camp Library and several North Camp levies also will not receive the revenue earmarked for them in the distribution of property taxes. North Camp's CRA is an affront to the taxpayers of the city as it is being administered to forgive taxes on properties owned by corporations and multi-municipal. These individuals and entities are high net worth individuals who can easily absorb the payment of property taxes into their business activities. I have a handout to leave with you that shows the unfortunate stakeholders in the loss of the property taxes you are abating. The North Camp City Schools are the major loser in this expansion of the CRA program. Order 32, 2016 will bring riches to the rich, financial decline to our city schools. Mr. Griffith, you have repeatedly stated that the schools will realize a boost in revenue when the terms of these abatements run their course. Could you or anyone on this council live without a raise in salary for the next 10, 12, 15 years? That is what you are asking the North Camp City Schools to live with. Do not be a casualty like Chicken Little, Henny Penny, Lucy Lucy, or Turkey Lurking. The sky is not falling if North Camp properties are not maintained. There are zoning codes on the books to deal with those issues. You cannot give away the lifeblood of the city as you are doing to get homeowners to maintain their properties. I have this handout for you. Also, I'd like to point out, I just saw Mr. John Arnold walk in. He has spoken to you twice over the discussion of these benefits. And he has a financial meeting, as does his employer. So he should preface his remarks by saying he is a lobbyist for Mr. DeHaas because he's employed by him. And as you saw last week, Beth Gordon, also, the development team of DeHaas was also here. So they're watching him, but we're also watching as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
But then the council, I hear from Ron Jeski, I live at 1005 Woodland Avenue and the Autobahn, if you call it actually, talking about Glenwood Street. Can I address you very briefly on two issues? Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. First one is the Autobahn, Glenwood Street. I was up here about six years ago, Chief Brian was the chief, and I think I've shown the council that people work here about Glenwood Street. Noise, motorcycles, they're unbelievable, stop signs are revving it up. Traffic going, who knows how fast. Stop signs are going through daily. Dogs bark, babies cry. My son lives in the front of a house in Glenwood with windows rattled. My wife went underwent expensive cancer surgery, we go, she's got to stay in the bedroom because she can't take the noise right now, but she's in such pain. All I'm asking, council, is we talk about abatements, we talk about this. Let's control our city and our traffic a little bit. Let's set some warrants about texting. Let's set some warrants about talking on the phone, every community in the world's got it. This, if the people are 10 miles over, it's beating on Glenwood Street, that's more than enough. Let's hack them. Let's stop motorcycles. Let's do what we can to upgrade our community in that respect. I'll end with that. Secondly, I want to talk about this tax abatement deal. I sit across the street from that lot and I agree with you about what's going on. I'm 72 years old, I've paid taxes for 40 years, my kids have been in school for over 30 years. I'm going to sit in my chair and I'm going to watch the homes go up and I'm going to watch a bunch of little kids playing over there and I am going to pay their school taxes for them because I can pay none. This is totally ridiculous. I mean, this blows my mind, I'm sorry to be so emotional. But you, the kids, you get put the burden on all folks to pay the taxes of other people because a realtor wants to sell those houses quickly because he can say, "Listen, folks, you buy this house, you already have paid the taxes." So you've got a multi, 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 multi-millionary realtor who's going to dictate the council because he's going to build these houses and he's going to sell without any tax. And I'm going to pay the taxes and so will everyone else in North Camp and North County. I do not understand why they get a tax break, I don't want to have to keep my house. So I'm in positions here and I don't mean to be. I got to let the bricks fall out of my house and it'd be a total disaster that I could come to the city council and say, "Well, I want to tax a thing on my Chevy, I'll beat up house." But I don't know what you're thinking is, because you can't put the burden on us people who are retired, who want to fix it down, get into retirement, and like I said, I'm going to wind up here. I'm not going to sit in my chair outside and watch a bunch of kids run around and I'm paying for their school taxes. Because, hello, that cannot happen. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, Ron, you wouldn't be getting a abatement for your garage under the current program?
Yes, sorry.
Sorry. Just to clarify, you actually would get an abatement for your garage under the current program?
I'm sorry, sir, I've got real bad memory.
It's okay. You would get an abatement for your broken-down garage under the current program?
About broken-down garage?
You would, yes, that's, I mean, part of it.
If you go.
Right. If you build a new one, you would be entitled to it.
Mr. President, point of order. You just laid out, there's no, not a point.
You know as well as anyone, not to speak up from the audience, I will have you removed.
That's my fault.
Councilman Griffith made a statement. Simple as that. Thank you, sir. You take your seat.
Thank you.
You know better than that, sir.
Glen, Glen Sander, 340 Rehappen Northwest. Before I start, Mr. Peters, you should have ruled, Mr. Griffith thought of order, he agrees to that, so... But tonight, with Memorial Day being on Monday, I was going to speak about the CRA, but I wanted to put these words into the minutes of the council. One of the most bitter battles of the Korean War was fought in December 1915 near the Chosin Reservoir. As hundreds of thousands of Chinese soldiers attacked US forces, overwhelming them. US servicemen went without food or sleep in the harsh, wind-whipped Korean winter. Most soldiers lacked proper clothing for sub-zero weather and almost everyone suffered frostbite. It was the beginning of the longest retreat in US military history. Only one road led out of this mountainous region and it came to be known as the Gauntlet. The Chinese watched as the retreating forces blocked their escape route with vehicles in a desperate attempt to get out alive. From their purchase high in the hills, the Chinese continued their attacks on their helpless victims. The road became jammed with incapacitated vehicles. The US soldiers were in an impossible situation. They had to leave the wounded who could not walk on their own behind. It was here that we start the saga of Private Ed Reeves. 19 years old, Ed was one of the 400 wounded that had to be left behind. His open-air truck was the last in the long convoy attempting to escape the certain death of the Gauntlet. The wounded were zipped in their sleeping bags, they were only protected from the severe cold. For four days they awaited their rescue, but none came, only the Chinese. And one by one, the Chinese stored the trucks and robbed the GIs and began a killing spree. And they set each of the trucks ablaze using what was left from the gas tanks to ignite the trucks with the wounded still inside. When they came to Ed Reeves' truck, they found it didn't have any gas. So they decided to shoot him in the head. Mr. Reeves said, "I talked to the Lord and asked for peace so I could die like a man. I sat there waiting to die. I found out you can still sweat when it's 35 degrees below zero." Incredibly, the bullet bent toward Ed's head, only grazed it, and he was still alive. He was left alone again. And over the course of the next several days, he tried to free himself and escape, but every time he fainted. And then the Chinese returned and found out that he was still alive and they dragged him from the truck and proceeded to beat him and they left him for dead. But again, Ed wouldn't give up. He began to crawl across the snowy frozen Chosin Reservoir in the direction of his retreating comrades. Nearly clothless and without any protection, finally he was discovered by the ice marines, a volunteer force who had struck out into enemy territory to save as many of the men who had been left behind as possible. Out of the 400 of his comrades stranded on the Gauntlet, only Ed made it out alive. The doctors felt Ed wasn't as good as dead, but against all odds, he battled his way back to help. Both of his feet and all of his fingers were amputated. But Ed came home and buried his sweetheart, raised seven children, who gave him 13 grandchildren. Ed said, "I've been blessed. I came back. I guess the Lord didn't want me to die on that road." I would like the last couple seconds of mine. A lot of times, we're required. Thank you.
Thank you. Good story. Is there anyone else wishing to address council? Please step forward.
Larry Truk, 1127 East Maple. I have somewhat impolite media publicity regarding the proposed CRA program. To be quite honest, I'm not that well versed on the ins and outs of this legislation other than it appears to me it does nothing to generate interest for the average homeowner. I'm not sure how long the present program has been in effect. However, with only three homeowners utilizing the program, I would venture to say it has not generated too much interest. So one question I would ask, what now causes you to believe it will create interest in other sectors of the city? The article in Sunday's Republic did mention abatements given to three homeowners, but no mention made of the larger amount of abatement given to businesses and/or developer builders. I wonder why. I also have trouble understanding a statement made by Councilwoman Keston, and I quote, "The schools aren't losing money. They aren't getting the increased value of property for a set number of years." Adding that once the exemption expires, the schools can collect on that increased amount, and quote. I don't quite understand your thinking on that. I don't know what you're saying. So the day driving through North Camp, I was looking for blighted areas. Didn't really see any, maybe a house here and there. But what I did notice were homes with neat paint, new roof, windows, all of which are not part of the community reinvestment program, as I understand. Some homes just needed minor tune-ups with locked yard work, et cetera. This made me think of city council. If city council really wants to assist the average homeowner and spruce up North Camp, let's be a little more innovative. Offer income tax credits for, let's say, three to five years for somebody to paint their house. Put on a new roof. Put in some new windows. Give them a tax credit. I'd not go to cancel to this, but I would certainly think it wouldn't be too costly to the city. Let's just say a $50 tax credit per household for 50 houses in North Camp. And if my math is correct, that would total $2,500 in tax credits. The same for a new roof or windows, would be another $2,500 if 50 people did it, 50 homes did it, for roughly, what, $5,000 a year in tax credits. A far cry from what schools could stand to lose under present proposal. I would like to think this city could give income tax credit, as I suggested, without too much of a problem. Just something to think about, something to think about. So I believe that there are other solutions to clean up North Camp with no loss to city schools or other facilities benefiting from the property tax. While I'm glad you're looking for ways to spruce up North Camp, please, not at the expense of schools or other facilities. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to address council, please step forward.
Rod Cuppy, 35 Long Island Avenue, Summit, North Camp. As I've said before, I'd love to visit my 200 appearances at this meeting and at Landers with several individuals, for the case chief and the other three partners of the city. During all that time, it's a bit of a page for me. My background happens to be journalism, I'm a degree journalist and act as a professional journalist for journalism all my life. So my life is devoted to that. We don't have a book of the Thocrities, but here is an unbound book that we never do anything, say, write anything, it isn't true. And if there's any doubt about it, get an affirmation. And if there's still some doubt about it, you get another affirmation. And if you're still not sure, you get another affirmation and you know. And if you're still not sure, you get a third affirmation, and you know what you're writing is true. So I've had a pleasure of working with some real professionals in this field who serve here. And I like to comment on them because they certainly deserve it. Communication is everything, everything. The image of this city is based on good communication between council, administration, the people here, and the people who are reporting this treaty. Seventeen thousand citizens who will be reading what they write. The numbers of persons who attend out of seventeen thousand, on the average, to each meeting, let's say, the forty meetings, thirty meetings a year, is only two or three people. Tonight, there are many more because of special issues. But to inform the other seventeen thousand, I'd like to give credit to especially three people. And one we all know well is Martin Bolset, who is a, he could have been a professional, a legal person, an attorney, that followed his career. But suddenly he turned into a star reporter, and he is a star reporter, as I had a pleasure of working with him. I see everything he does every week when he posts. Does a great job. So Martin, on behalf of the citizens, we thank you very much. The young lady is right. It's very new, and we've heard of Robert Wyng. Most of us remember Robert Wyng, who represented the repository for two years. Did a great job, and I personally had a pleasure of accompanying to see if we could not clean the repository of the city. It made him be a total surprise for what he did. He was truly his profession. But things happened at the repository, there are changes, and I was worried when he was reassigned. But thankfully, the city was reassigned. His position is filled by young lady Jessica Holbrook, who is right here. She is, I read it before, she says, she personally, as I mentioned in the previous meeting, saved the cucumber tree. The largest cucumber tree in the world is right here in North Canton. And I live within fifty yards of it, and I've been protecting it and taking care of publicizing it. And there are probably fifteen or twenty million people who know about that tree and who know about North Canton because of the internet now. And we had, were approaching two thousand visitors. So that tree would have been cut down, and visitors were not allowed to come to see it anymore, or not for Jessica. The Beacon Journal, I'm repeating this for some of you, but some of the people here didn't know this. I'm repeating it because the Beacon Journal wrote a piece that they were just a little bit hasty and headline, the man who is running Aubrey Knowles, man, who is not a very nice gentleman, frankly, and that's for the record, because he said, "We don't want people coming in here anymore. They walk around, they wander, and they rob our homes." People don't come in to see that tree and then go rob your homes, rob our homes. We had three robberies at Aubrey Knowles in thirty years. They robbed inside jobs. One lady, her blood still open, left two other persons, two women, in fact, came, stole sixteen thousand dollars with the jewelry. So, and the other two were also so-called inside jobs. And even though it's a gate in the nearly, the average person probably gives their number out for entrance in the gate, at least a hundred people. So there were thousands of people who, anyways, it was terrible what he did. But thankfully, he's out of business now. But the piece that Jessica wrote after visiting the tree, spending a night with me in my kitchen and finding out what really happens in the history of the tree, her piece is what saved that situation. And since then, we had another fifty persons.
Your time is up. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council, please step forward. State your name and address. Last chance. Steve Nung will move on to whole business. They have a motion and a second to read by title on the second meeting, ordinance number thirty-seven dash sixteen.
Yes.
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 Surratt.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
Sending us to read my title only the second meeting in order number thirty-seven, two thousand and sixteen. In ordinance amending section twenty, compensation of chapter one five five personnel regulations of hot car, administrative, curative, qualified organizations of the city of North Canton to update the compensation level by exempt employees in line, going on a sudden call to live by permit the city to comply with the high maintenance, highly trained and experienced leaders and managers of the city to be in emergency.
Yes, we spoke about this last week, and the department of ordinance, right after this, addressed the same issue. This really came to light when we saw the, the green opening in the paper, and it was a lot higher than what our range is. So what this does, basically, expands the range, salary ranges for all of the exempt employees, and it will allow us to attract, maintain highly trained and highly skilled personnel. No other comments. I'll entertain motion in a second to adopt.
Griffith?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Carron?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Sending us to read the second meeting in order number thirty-eight, two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to read by title on the second meeting, ordinance number thirty-eight dash sixteen.
Keith?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Carron?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Sending us to read by title on the second meeting, ordinance number thirty-eight, two thousand and sixteen. In ordinance amending section ten, vacation regulations of chapter one five five personnel regulations of hard car, administrative, curative, qualified organizations of the city of North Canton to update the vacation level of exempt employees in line with their competitors and live by permit the city to comply with the high maintenance, highly trained and experienced leaders and managers and increase the safety in emergency.
Yes, this is the companion piece of what we came across when you're hiring skilled and highly experienced individuals that are coming from jobs that have three, four, or five weeks vacation. And for the ordinance that we had, we couldn't offer one. And this allows us flexibility ourselves and the administration to attract and maintain talent.
I had a feeling I was going to say, just to clarify, we're not sentencing new salaries. We're providing a range that we can negotiate, so that's worth it.
Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain motion and second to adopt. So move.
Peters?
Yes.
Carron?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
Fontaine?
Yes.
Griffith?
Yes.
And Keith?
Yes.
Sending us to read the second meeting in order number thirty-eight, two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you. On to new business. They have a motion and a second to read by title on the first reading, ordinance number thirty-two dash sixteen.
So move.
Start.
Carron?
Yes.
Surratt?
Yes.
Peters?
No.
Fontaine?
I'm saying.
Griffith?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
And Peters?
Yes.
Five yes, one no, no tipsting.
In ordinance amending section three seven three five point six five to three seven three five point seven zero, the advice code establishing and describing the boundaries of a community investment area in the city of North Canton designating an housing officer to administrate for it, creating a community investment of the council and expecting seventy-three council.
Thank you. Chairwoman.
Yes, I just had a few comments before we started getting into this meeting again. First of all, it's probably, I think I'm very excited to see that there are more than our normal two to three people here on Monday night, as you had spoken about. That obviously means, you know, people are reading the paper and they're interested in what we're doing around here. So I truly appreciate that. The only way we're going to make things work here is if you guys give us your opinions. And quite honestly, we started talking about this legislation in March, and I have not received one single call for or against. So I do appreciate people coming up and speaking on the record because they're not calling us on the phone or emailing our clerk. So thank you for all those of you who do come up and speak to us. Secondly, secondly, Mr. Tripp, I appreciate you coming back. I told you you wouldn't be back, and I'm glad to see your face here. We appreciate your comments as well. As far as understanding the newspaper, you obviously haven't been here for most of our conversations, but we're trying to encourage or entice people to remodel their homes. And yes, unfortunately, the auditors have made it very clear to us that general maintenance does not count. That's unfortunate. None of us agree with that, but we have nothing, there's nothing we can do about that. As far as passing sentence in the future, we are working on that. Eric and I have been talking about grant programs, trying to something together to get people to be able to afford to do that general maintenance of their homes. But what we're hoping for is people maybe will take advantage of the CRA program. Their neighbors are going to see that, hey, they're doing some stuff around the home, and maybe they'll want to use this up to their home. So that's sort of the purpose of the CRA. The other purpose is, or they try to understand how the taxes are abated. Is it only is abated on the value, your property value goes up, right? They only abate the difference in that property value. And unfortunately, it's really not going to be a whole lot of money on general residential. If you redo a kitchen and two bathrooms, let's say, and you put twenty grand into it, the value of your home may go up, and maybe it'll go up five, six, seven grand, and then we give the abatement. So a lot of this is incremental, but it's more, we're trying to get, we're trying to incentivize people to make their property look nice in the city of North Canton as much as we can. And that leads me to the fact that Canton is currently, obviously, has an extreme problem with their housing stock. And they have constantly contacted us and said, my God, you know, we are so behind on the eight ball. You guys are so right. We should have done this fifteen years ago. I work at Albin Hospital. They're working with Albin, trying to make around Albin Hospital look better and incentivize those homeowners. So this project is huge, not only for the city of North Canton, but for the county, because nobody else has one like it. So we're trying to revolutionize it. Yeah, it's a work in progress. We're going to look at the math every two years. We've made that very clear to everybody. It's in the legislation. Things may change. Things may get added back in. We're trying to make it as fair as we possibly can. We're trying to mirror other businesses' legislation in the state. We do currently have two CRAs in our city that have been in place, probably fifteen, twenty. I know I was around and did one of them, but I don't think the other one predates me. So yes, unfortunately, oh, ninety-nine predates me. Unfortunately, yeah, a lot of people not taking advantage of the CRA. The few people that have, kudos to them, and it's more about, did they reach out and ask the question? You know, we can only advertise so much and, you know, give out so much information. So if they go seeking, hey, what can I do? Is there any help out there? That's where we're at. And Mr. Osborne made it very clear that Mr. Arnold needs to speak, that he represents D-HOP, but Mr. Osborne also has to represent himself, be speaking against CRA, that he currently has a CRA, and gives an abatement on his home. So let's be fair. Other issues, the CRA, it's an equal opportunity ordinance. I cannot say, hey, you homeowners, we want you to improve your homes, but you developers, we don't want you to improve anything. We want everybody to improve everything, regardless of whether it's vacant land or IRG or a company. We want everybody to improve their properties, not just homeowners. So CRA, equal opportunity. I think that's what we're here for. I think I hit on everything I wanted to look at. So let's get to the mini read. We, last week, were, Mr. D-HOP called. I had gone on the record and said, hey, I'm going to ask the developers of the sanctuary grant. Currently, the sanctuary grant is in the map. And the other point I want to make, this all has to be approved by the state. So we're, we put, we've been working on this for almost two years at YI. It's been on the record since March. We put a lot of time and energy into this. We do have a housing stock survey that proves that the city of North Canton homes are not what we'd like them to be. We had to have that housing stock survey so we can send it to the state so we can potentially qualify for this citywide community reinvestment area. We did all that work over the last two years. We've been speaking about it since March. We've decided this is something we want to do. Last week, I spoke about potential, I would love for the developers of the sanctuary grant to give the schools a gift. Obviously, the schools are not going to get the full amount of the taxes for twelve years if this legislation goes through, especially on the sanctuary grant. I realize that's what's going on right now in everybody's heads. It's going to happen with anything else as well, but that's the big guy right now. So Mr. D-HOP's already last week had said, currently he's offering ten thousand, he can give the schools ten thousand dollars every year that we abate the taxes. It's in writing. We all have copies of it. He doesn't have to give the schools anything. He does, he is not required. Right now, as far as we know, the scope of the project, he's not required to give a gift. He's offered a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the schools over the twelve years. So those of us, I was pretty excited about that, and he stepped up to the plate and offered some money. So we're excited about that. I realize that that project is huge, and they will get a significant abatement. However, it is a sixteen million dollar project that we want in the city of North Canton. I realize it's already being built. However, they could have gone other places. So we are very excited. I think the schools are very excited. It's a sixteen million dollar project, regardless of how much is abated or not at this point. And after twelve years, that's a lot of money. So we're very excited about that project. I just want to get that on the record. So, two, I think we got everything ironed out. As far as the map, as far as the abatement type and years, we're at remodels, the lowest. You have to at least put twenty-five hundred dollars into your home. It's ten years, a hundred percent abatement. If you're remodeling, you're rated in two units, which would be, obviously, apartment buildings or anything rated in two units, you have to at least put fifty thousand dollars into the project. And right now, we have it at fifty percent for twelve years. And the cost of a regular home would be fifteen percent, or a hundred percent for fifteen years. There are a lot of vacant lots in the city, you know, the Summit Street ones are. But quite honestly, we started thinking about the CRA before we knew those lots were being separated. So that, you know, that's not fair. They didn't separate those lots because we were having CRA. We were trying to keep this housing stock going, and they just sacrificed property. We're really excited. Those seven homes would be huge over there on that one. So right now, we're at this point where I think we've ironed everything out. I'm just speaking. Leave it up to everybody else.
Do you want to speak to the covenants?
Oh, in the covenants, yes, Summit Place. We do have that on the record as well, or in an email, that those Summit Place homes do have covenants in their deeds. There's only certain builders that can build there. The minimum value of the home has to be three hundred thousand dollars, and the architecture has to be just like the sanctuary architecture that's in the deeds of those homes as well. So it's going to be very similar and beautiful, quite honestly.
Did we get the Waterside letter?
We have the Waterside. I don't know if we've got it confirmed yet, but a new marker.
I've received information that the issues that concern me, that they're going to address those who have their legal counsel, to draft an agreement and forward that to be for our review, is certainly something that we wish to have reported, the reporter's office, because if there's an agreement not to put multifamily properties on that, one of the things that you look at is, well, this is for a period of ten years, what if the property would be sold? So what you want is to have a document that can be recorded, and so it would be a deed restriction that would travel with the property, or run with the property. But if someone else was buying, they would still be placed under that restriction. But as today, I have not received it.
I'm going to explain that as well, since we have the authority on it. Waterside is a new, well, not new, but development down on, like, Bridge Cross Street, Bonnet Street, on South Main Street. It's been city vacant for six years. They're roding. It was supposed to be high-tech jobs. It was done in cooperation with the state of North Canton, the state of Ohio, and they gave a grant to build that road. However, it is known where they could fully property our apartments on that piece of property. And, you know, we're not excited about that because we're thinking... And, you know, we're not excited about that because we're thinking we're getting high-tech type jobs on that property. But the agreement ends in 10 years, which is only in three or four years, I believe, the agreement ends. So, in three or four years, they could put apartments on that property. Mr. D-HOP and Mr. Logan have agreed to put a covenant in the deed and write us a letter that for the next 10 years, if they can remain in the CRA, which they are currently in the Main Street CRA, if they can remain in the CRA, they will not put apartments on that property. So, that's what that Waterside agreement is. All right, I'm open.
I was just going to say, Larry, I agree that one of the concerns that I've had about the whole process is the fact that not a lot of folks have utilized the existing CRA right now. And one of the reasons, I would say the main reason is because it doesn't usually, logically make sense based on the old restrictions. We had a huge, huge restriction on how much you needed to improve your house and most people couldn't come up with enough improvements to make it work. So, one of the things that we did hear was to say, hey, we're going to drop that restriction as low as we were able to based on the statute. So, now, we are bringing literally as many people as possible to our, to our home rehabs based upon the numbers that are there. So, we are extending the home improvement projects to as many people as we can within the city. And that was a debate and discussion. We want to encourage improvement in as many ways as we can. And I also agree, completely agree with you that this is a big issue. In many ways, when it comes to development, the answer isn't one big thing or even two big things. It's 26 little things and this is one little thing that maybe will change 10 houses or five houses. Or even if it's one, that's one house that isn't going to be a problem long-term. And we can't assume that things are going to continue to be good here. We've got to make sure we do as much as we can to extend incentive to homeowners to make sure that our communities are improved. And I just want to bet on that too. So, I do think that there's more incentive for people to utilize the CRA now because we dramatically dropped the level from tens of thousands to 2,500. That, that should make a big difference.
Thank you for that. Well, and also, we increased the area. So, we've added here and we talked about a family came in last week who lived in Portage and wants to redo their home previously. They worked in the CRA. And, you know, to Mr. Cuddy's point too, we've, we've, we've kind of developed the CRA and they just kind of blow it off. So, it's one of our jobs now to communicate that to the public and say, this is a good event, it's happening in North Pian. They're positive, right? That's a nice job, going to lure new people to it. But, I mean, it's a preference, it's a people's money. We are offering, I mean, you're right, it's a small incentive, but one small incentive from one house to another house to another house in this whole neighborhood, at least a place or so.
Of course, that, that study that was done, was there about median age?
Eric, no, I'm talking, Eric?
Seventy-three.
Seventy.
Seventy-three years.
And one of the things that, you know, when I look at this, that comes to mind is, you know, and I don't know, I don't know who said it, when they drove around said they didn't see how much light. I see a little bit of it in my award. Not full on light yet, but I can see where it could turn in 10 years. This CRA, I think, takes a longer view. I mean, I think what people have talked about tonight is you're abating these taxes right now. I get that. I, I'm not, you know, I'm a little uncomfortable about it, but I take the long view on this. You know, I want this, this state to be strong long after. I'm out here and my kids are living in this community and my kids go to the school and I am very hesitant of the fact that some of these monies are going to be abated for the short term. You know, it's going to affect me as a taxpayer, but at the end of the day, you know, I'm taking the long view when I vote yes on this legislation. I look in my neighborhood and we took a lot of flack for putting so much money in the local pool. And the short view was, well, it's a recreational facility used by a very small portion of the city. The view that I took at on it was that is a, an economic driver. There's homes back behind there that were built right after World War II. Some of those don't go into that basis. You know, and when we moved into our house, there were sold for about $100,000. Couple of them have sold for $30,000 in the last couple of years. That's, that scares me. That's an indicator that that neighborhood is headed in the wrong direction. One of the things that keep the value of that property up is the proximity to the school, proximity to a public pool. One of, how many in the state, three? You know, I mean, so you can justify spending 70, 80,000 dollars on a three-bedroom one bathroom home. The CRA now gives those folks an opportunity to add on. Somehow they have garages. Put a garage on that property and abate those taxes. That's what I'm looking at, okay? I'm looking to bring the young families into this community. I see a lot of older folks out here, I'm one of them. We're not going to be around 20, 30 years. But our kids and the new young families moving in are going to. That's the view that I'm looking at, okay? I'm going to trip over corridors to get to that, okay? You know, I'm going to pick that corridor up. So, you know, that's my view on it. Now, as far as the abatements for some of the larger projects, yeah, the folks that are doing these are very wealthy, they're very well-lot, they worked hard to get to that point. But they are investing 16 million, at least that's projected. It could be more, could be a lot more. And it's going to break jobs into the city. And I would even venture a guess that a portion of you sitting out here might be living there about 10, 15 years, enjoying that in the middle of North Pian. It's a long-term investment and that's, that's the bottom line. And that's the view I look at and that's why my vote is yes. Now, with that being said, you know, we're only abating a certain percentage for a certain amount of years. So, all these new developments is new money to the school. Let's not forget that. I mean, you're not, the schools aren't collecting anything on that piece of property right now. Well, this bill is built and appraised and I, and I think it's going to be on more than 16 million. Yeah, that could be a, it will be a significant amount of money to the schools. And then after 12 years, they're going to realize the full amount of that. That's the long view, that's looking down the road, that's planning for the long-term future. So, that's my consensus. Anyone else want to chime in?
Oh, I'll give a dissonant view to everybody. I think we've had great discussion here. I agree with mostly everybody saying here tonight. I think the audience has made great points. The schools are number one in terms of during North Pian. Hands up. Or are they top 1% Ohio, top 4% nationally? I just don't want to see anybody affected long-term that's going to put lettuces on the ballot that is, was mentioned here by some of our public here during public speeches. They're going to be relied upon to increase lettuces. I think we're missing in here on that. I'm all for the residential neighborhoods and fixing the older homes. But, you know, where are we going to be 10 years from now, 12 years from now, 15 years from now? Are any of us going to be here? Maybe not. 10 years from now, maybe a few, if that, 15? I, I just, I'm looking for some compromise here. Maybe leave the residential alone at 10 years, maybe only give it five years for being a city. Five years is still a lot of incentive that you're giving to developers that are already building this facility, whether we pass this or not. That's going to happen. By taking five years, we curtail how much schools are going to lose long-term. And we might still be here in five years, most of us, to realize, is that a good decision or not? That's what I think I, I'm asking the council doing now, compromising. Look at this short-term versus long-term. We've all, should have learned from history. We look at CEDAs agreements, gen agreements, they gain for 99 years. These 15 years is a long time. Well, 12, 15, depending on what you're looking at, okay? Those are long, that's, that's a long time. Our incentive has always been the great schools, great services, the great parks, the great housing, everything that North Pian represents. Really, there shouldn't, really need to be a lot of incentive. I agree to go forward with this if it's the right terms. But I just can't see giving away hundreds of thousands of dollars if you don't have to. Five years should be good enough. It should be good enough. The incentive's our area to build because of where we are in North Pian. Nothing has been in writing that, that would, that would say that those developers could count on this avenue. So, I'm just asking this council to compromise. Let's learn from the past. How much is too much? Let's reel it in a little bit. Then you'll have my vote. You don't need my vote now, the way discussions are happening. But I think that's something that I can live with and we can move forward with this together. I'm going to be ruled out of order. Thank you.
I would, I would make a comment, just to reiterate what I said, remember, so I know you're looking at this probably very specifically, but the CRA is...
Before you continue, I, I have a move that you can just put on the record, find him out of order, otherwise you're going to have this continuing and someone's going to jump up, shout what they wish to say, run out of building because they don't wish to be removed.
I will find him out of order, but you can be told that's why I'm going to stop these guys making chuffers through the mess. Larry, I mean, they...
That's all I'm saying. Put it on the record, I apologize for whatever you would.
Let the record reflect that, that sailor is out of order and he has removed himself very quickly from the, from the beach. Remember.
I just want to make a comment that this is, you know, a citywide CRA, this, this 12 years, 15, yeah, 12 years, 50% is not just for the sanctuary grant.
No, absolutely.
So, so what I want to point out is we're requiring them to put $50,000 in improvements. So, if you only need the abatement for five years, it's, it's not, I mean, it's difficult. So, we're really not incentivizing them, is what I'm trying to say, because the value of the property may go up 10, 20, maybe greater, I mean...
If you build a new home, if you build a new home, it's going to pay the property tax for five years, that might be $10,000 in savings you're going to lose. That's, that's a lot of money.
So, now you're accusing me?
No, no, you know, 10 years for the remodel.
10 years for the remodel.
Right. What's, what's the amount?
15.
15, it should be fine. I, I'm saying we go five.
Oh, so now a lot would be...
No, you're building a new home. I'm not, I'm not a liar. Now, I wasn't in favor of something. I wasn't in favor of sanctuary grant, that's okay. If it's going to be, it's okay, include it, include them all. But just maybe five years. Maybe a $250,000 house just five years. Or whatever the praised house is going to be, just hope it's at least that, something. I'd be very disappointed for that to happen. Let's be realistic.
The deed says 300,000.
Okay, well, fine, what if it is 300,000? That's great. What's the, what's the property tax at 300? I, I don't know what's going to be. Maybe it's $2,000 a year. That's probably low. That's probably low. Maybe it's $3,000 a year. I'm saying for five, for $15,000 you're giving incentive, people are going to buy homes, change ownership. 15 years is a long point.
This is the first time you brought up 15-year...
No, we've talked, we've talked in general terms, but nothing specifically. I've just been thinking about this lately.
You've spoken specifically for a month now.
No, we've, we've talked about...
This is the first time you've said you've gone after the 15 years.
No, this is the first time Mark brought it up, Mr. Rutter brought it up. Well, we never really actually pursued it.
I think that's where we got the question.
I'm pursuing it now, it's first read.
Oh, totally fine.
You know, we've had a discussion, I appreciate that we've tied it, tied it all together. Like I said, I see council's point of view, I see the rest's point of view. I see what's good for the community. What's good for the community is not over-incentivized, in my opinion. Five years should be enough. Still, the deed is to 10 years for the remodeling. I'm not going back, we've all kind of said that tonight. I've been on the soapbox, pouting about it and, you know, fix your home up, that's fine, you got there, just make new, new structures or even some remodels of the apartments. Five years. We, we look at a great place, we don't need to give them 12, 15 years. Five years should be enough. Let's just think about that.
Couple of comments elicited earlier. I think everyone, this whole idea, this was an attempt to help our housing. When we get back to it, our survey, or not survey, said that one of the number one things is people saw our housing going down. Okay, so this isn't just a piece, I wasn't trying to do that. There are ideas like Mr. Tripp said, which I appreciate, you know, the pain in your house and we can corrupt on everything and that's part of what makes us a good community. Developers are very important. Government cannot do some that developers do. We need developers, so let's don't, just don't think that we're, we can just control that. It's very important. Fox Hoover was a developer. He created and developed a lot of this stuff here. So, let's make sure that we're not bashing developers, that people were making money and making our community great. Fantastic, good for them. And bottom of our schools, the way they are because of the things that we've developed in this community, can allow developers. So, we're trying to set some tone for, for the future. The thing that I left last week, last week, we talked about big elephant in the room was the grant. I don't care if the developers, old properties, lots that are open, old neighborhoods, fine, knock themselves out, put a good brand-new home in there, increase the diet of everybody around them, that's right. But the developer, the big community grant thing was the big elephant in the room this weekend. And I know we said it, 50%, which is great, I think we did a fantastic job of that rather than 100%. I think we left this, though, we could look at the years. I mean, I mean, Doug said five years for something different, Doug. I think we're a little bit off a little bit. It's 12 years right now, I believe, for multi-homes. We're trying, to be honest, I discourage multi-home. I don't want apartments in this community, but I think that they look nice and everything where they look like in 15, 20 years. So, we should make it tougher in multi-homes. So, you know, instead of 12 years, I, I left this main last week, they get eight years for a multi-home. And that includes the sanctuary grant, they get their 50%, they get eight years, there's a little compromise there. 12 years is a lot of money for major projects like that. We're still getting some. We still want developers in. We're still getting 50% for multi-homes and, but I think around eight years, five might be, not a...
They just would recoup their money.
Right, you still have to get, but I'm, I'm thinking more in the eight years, not necessarily the 12 years for a big, the multi-unit type things. For the housing thing, I'm wanting people to go. Now, for those areas that we've, we've kind of taken out, the sanctuary, Monticello, those are going to happen. This is North Pian, they're building new homes, those are going to happen in those areas, you know, it, it's not, they're going to happen next year, it's just part of our community, people want to live here. So, that's kind of where I had our, our set with the multi-home issue, with the multi-annoy. And I think we need to look at that differently. I don't know where you're at when you were saying...
No, I, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, because you look, I sound like you're going towards the...
I thought you were talking about the...
The house. Eight days is annual, being seen just means five years.
I just don't think it, it's really not an incentive. It's hard enough to put 50,000 in just to apply for it. I mean, so let's say they get 3,000 back a year for five years, that's only 15, I mean, so if you're looking at that...
You've got to have some sentence, you've got to have a sentence, right.
We're going to have areas around us, we need to...
And we can look at this every two years. This is, this is something that we're in place. That's the best thing we talked about is every two years. But I'm saying, well, we lock into these agreements, if they're 12 now, that's it, you know, change.
You're right. Once they've remained out of there.
Now's the time to say it's going to be five or eight or wherever it's going to be. You know, that's my point. We're talking the same thing, you guys are just, you know, what was it?
I don't want to say that.
I have to be more clear than I said. Well, anything other than a re, perhaps a single-family residential, we can read that, it should be five years. Why is, why is it so long? Everyone learned their lessons.
No, that's, let's make it, your, your two years is, is actually your minimum. You, you...
You can, it's all, I just wanna make sure that anything that you might be altering, how that might affect someone, I make sure that they're included. And another key aspect of it is understand that there are very different processes for your applications for residential versus commercial endeavor. Residential, it is much more straightforward, you can go to the housing officer, your application. If that's approved, then it goes to the county auditor, and we'll see if your improvements actually didn't improve the value of your home. For industrial, commercial, those applications, the owner must enter into an agreement with the council. And make the determination of what the percentages and what the amounts are on every application. Council must enter into an agreement. And if the value of the tax abatement and so forth, and the new employees that come in, there's the factor in there with whether it generates a million dollars or not. All of that must be approved by the school board. And if that doesn't happen, and council moves forward and approves, the commercial, industrial tax abatement has not been approved by the school board. Then that amount that would have gone to the school, but for the abatement, council will be responsible for it. So you're gonna have an opportunity, every single time one of these new constructions and so forth come before council, that's commercial or industrial, walk through that. And then you'll be able to do some negotiations with that, in addition with having the consideration of how it's gonna affect the school, and whether or not the school board will support it.
Another example, I think it's a little better, let's say someone owns a home and they are paying $4,000 a year. And they put 100 grand, let's say they added on. That might improve their home, what would you say, 100, $1,000, 2,000, what would you, what do you think it would? A thousand? Okay, the school still pays the same, but in five years, they're only saving, let's say, $5,000. That's nothing incentive, so I'm not really getting.
A lot was 10 years.
But you want to go on five.
He wants to go.
Not for the remodel.
I know.
That stays, that stays.
Same for the new homes, they put a little.
People like the multi-family, yes, yes. 10 years is nothing to look at too, you know, this greatly expanded. Couple times, you know, unfortunately, some of the over-homes, I used to worry for somebody older or can't live in those, weren't included.
Are you specifically going after the seven homes or just the empty lots?
No, I'm not going, I don't.
Because the empty lots, I want people to build there, you gotta get some, because they've been sitting there for years and years and years, those lots.
I understand.
And we're not getting anything for those lots.
But five years is. What, you know, someone who built that house might just sell it anywhere, not to live in it, you mean, think about it.
Another consideration for you is understand that whatever you put down in this ordinance or your CRA for residential, in your categories, the percentage that you agree to abate, that's the same for everyone. And then you can have the different amounts, I just wanna make sure where residents are where.
There's two things we did here, one, we discussed how the math is gonna be done. Now we're discussing the details of the actual property tax base, correct? Let's realize it, you know, that's all I'm saying. So the over-homes weren't included. We're not including till this one.
Well, they were in certain areas.
Certain areas were, but, you know, like we saw.
That's why we asked for the need this.
Yeah, exactly, we've all said that tonight.
And that's another reason why a lot of people hadn't historically taken advantage of it.
Right, they wanted the area.
Which is, was a smaller area. But we've been looking at any house built before 1945, no matter where it is in the city, it's eligible for a tenure, you know. Those are things you gotta look at. And I know, I know it's kinda towards the end of our discussions, but it doesn't mean we still can't look at, we still need re-reading some of it. This is important to me, it's important to everybody here, I don't mean just me, it's just, it's important to future more than you, especially our schools. I mean, it's the way I look at it. Let's, let's not kid ourselves. If we do nothing, we don't do a CRA, and then we collect all the taxes on the grant and hope that someone builds and improves their property. One of the comments that I've heard, well, you know, that means that it's gonna be more levies or a sooner levy. It has no effect on anything at all. The levy's gonna come, the levy's gonna come, they have their own budget that they have to handle, and they're all lineups. You know, they mentioned, someone mentioned about teachers being laid off. Every school district is managing their salary and benefit line item right now, every one of them. Regardless of what the municipal government, some of these municipal attachments are doing to spark development. They're doing it, they're trimming salary, everyone is doing it, so.
So I guess at this point, we need to agree what the year's gonna be. So we're agreeing on the 10-year, 25-year.
Or eight, eight years.
For remod. Now we're at the P, the greater than two units. Currently we're at 12 years, 50%. We have a majority to go on that. We can, if somebody else wants to speak, you know, we're done, you mark our.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I think the important piece there is that, you know, one of the real concerns about apartment buildings that are built in the city is that they do depreciate over time. And so what we're saying here is, we want a significant investment. We want you, you're not gonna get tax break unless you put at least $50,000 of improvements. But we wanna give people tax incentives to keep the apartment buildings that are already here nice. We want things like North Point to continue to be nice. So I don't think there's a big deal with you. Again, if you look at the numbers that exist when you actually run them, that even with the term there right now, it's really not that significant.
What, North Point?
Well, I mean, for the multi-family.
You know what we don't know is how many people that are paying. If you bring this down to the side, maybe we'll do that.
Yeah, and we're gonna be able to have.
That's the only way we're going in this budget. We don't know, and let's also look at too, no matter what's built in the city, we're gonna have to provide services to it. And they're not tax paying, they're not income tax revenue streams over there in sanctuary grant. Let's be, the workers. But let's just be realistic, as we're growing over as a community, that presents other challenges for us that we have to meet with our EMS, fire, some other services, so.
And we're, we're.
That shouldn't be rehearsed with those. Right, I understand, but those are things we gotta look at while we're looking at.
We talked a little bit for all of the ambulance.
I can throw this Karen, we get everything we go.
Yeah. And what is vehicles' projected income, tax revenue?
45,000 a year right now.
The city. So that is a significant amount.
And that's unique, because there's income tax, so most multi-family, there's not gonna be income tax, so that is a unique project.
Unless they live.
Well, yeah, that's a paying tax, I agree. This is actually jobs, generating revenue jobs. So, but also, big picture, I keep going back to the sanctuary grant, which I know is the element, but we're talking broad, we're talking multi-family, greater than two units, what do we wanna do? That's what we're talking about.
Five years better than no years, is the way I look at it. How much is too much? What's the fine line you have on?
I think it's better than five years.
Yeah, I agree, with that, it's five.
I wanna, I actually want to run a couple of chapters.
Let's run some numbers, let's.
I'm coming from passing, I mean, I'm coming from passing, it's current form in the first reading.
You can come back to questions now.
No, I'm talking about the actual, because I think we've all talked philosophically about it, but, I mean, everybody, we've all talked about this is right, this is wrong. The reality is, whether it's somebody putting on a garage or a large builder doing a $100,000 project, no one's gonna do it unless it makes numbers sense.
On both sides.
On both sides, exactly. So I wanna see what, and I'm happy to do the work, I'll make sure that we've got it ready.
I'm okay to go ahead and the first reading, I'd like to, as I go with these years, that's what I'm saying, or I'll bail with the second or third reading, because I'd like to see, unless it makes sense, the numbers make a lot better sense. But I'm okay moving forward, because I do think the whole idea of it is the way that we do it for the future. I think we do need to tweak it a little bit.
And I wanna see which projects, I mean, historically, we're looking here for.
For the lots.
Historically, well, we talked a lot about that.
You know, that we didn't report on.
A reluctance to.
And we can change it every two years, basically. Make sure we understand that, that the ones that we put in it, it had already been implemented.
I'm committed to having some numbers as examples for our next meeting, so that we have a more informed discussion about it.
It's two weeks away, it's two weeks away, it's only time to.
Three readings, I think it's very important, based on what we've heard tonight, I mean, there were folks that who admittedly said they didn't know much about it, but they still had an opinion on it. I think we need to make sure they know enough about it so they can have an informed opinion. And that goes for everyone, not just the folks that came here tonight, and some of them are informed than others. So I think that's a lesson moving forward here. We can hash out numbers and do what we need to do to get everyone in a comfortable position, but more importantly, we need to have a message to the community on what this really is and what it's all about. How it affects, not just the schools, but how it affects the community. I mean, we're cognizant of where the schools are at, that we have a finished air responsibility to the taxpayers. We're not presentable as a school here. You know, we're.
I think, I mean, I think we all take that, it's very important to discuss, I mean, it's really important. And I will also say, I spoke to Doug Lane, who of course is the president of the chamber, about the issue too, and he was committed to if we want to pass some version of this, to help us participate in educational sessions. So that it's not just something that goes out on our books, but that people, residents are able to really take advantage of. And again, maybe that's something that would spruce the fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh elements of what we can do to continue to make improvements in the neighborhoods. So that's important to that educational, which is just what you're talking about.
And the newsletters, do you newsletter?
Okay, so I'm gonna move, we give it its first reading at P is 12 years, 50% currently, and C is 15 years, 100% currently.
Hold on, we've already read it.
Oh, yeah.
You have to go read it, you can turn this over to.
Yeah, we have voted on the first reading.
Yeah, to adopt first reading.
Sorry, motion we adopt.
Okay, I'll second. Yes.
No.
I'm staying.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you, may I have a motion in a second to read by title only, the first reading, the ordinance number 40-16.
So moved.
Second.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Seven yes to read by title only, the first reading, ordinance number 40, 2016. We would have put two permanent tenants up with our contract public by hydrant, and water line began for the real property known as private personal number 19, 0733. Putting part of the law number 200, by the community of the local, and by the charter of the district corporation, Crete and James Lee Walker. We accept the process to the tour, and you certainly can compare the.
Thank you, Chairman Fonte, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Quite a long one. Anyhow, this is the, so this says the perpetual power agreement easements, we have access to this behind the sidewalk on Albert Road by where the, hopefully, the huge site, I'll drop it at Vaop. So that's where it is, and we will have the ability to maintain access, and so I hope that we adopt that first reading.
Second.
Fonte.
Yes.
Gredit.
Yes.
Heasly.
Yes.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
And Fordyce.
Yes.
Seven yes to read by title only, the first reading, ordinance number 40, 2016.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second to suspend the rules of council, the first reading, the ordinance number 40, yes.
So moved.
Gredit.
Yes.
Heasly.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Fonte. Seven yes to suspend the rule of council factory reading for ordinance number 40, 2016.
And may I have a motion in a second to adopt under suspension of the rules, ordinance number 40-7. Second.
Heasly.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
And Gredit.
Yes.
Seven yes to adopt under suspension of the rules for ordinance number 40, 2016.
Thank you, may I have a motion in a second to read by title only, the first reading, resolution number 3-16.
So moved.
Second.
Peters.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Fonte.
Yes.
And Heasly.
Yes.
Seven yes to read by title only, the first reading, ordinance, or resolution 3, 2016. The resolution doesn't mean the law is truly a city truth.
Thank you, Chairwoman, Claire.
So we talked about this, a few meetings, and the reason this all started was the master plan, and one of the things that came up in that point was to remove the title of Dogwood City. It just didn't, they had it in the back, and some people wanted it, and it was made up of a camp. So one of the, I guess, things that we thought were kind of important in this committee, was to not take with history or heritage that the Dogwood tree has had to run with the time of the camp. And so instead to make the tree the Dogwood tree as a city truth, just to have it as a tagline, on all working, and there's markers and matches and different things. Anything else, Claire?
Listen.
So we took off.
Second.
Larry.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Fordyce.
Yes.
Gredit.
Yes.
Heasly.
Yes.
Seven yes to adopt the first reading of resolution 3, 2016.
Thank you, the board's got a lot there.
Okay, thanks for all the comments from all our guests. But I'd just like to say, since I've participated a lot in the conversation, perception is reality in most people's minds. So it's more of us to make sure, through the different modes of communication, we take advantage of technology, and get the word out of what really is happening, what the facts are, so that the perception's not the reality, and reality's reality, right? So I'd say we have the tools, once we figure out what it is that we need to present, or someone present it, and post it out there for all the people that can't come. That's the only way they're gonna know the facts, not the perception. So that's my report.
Thank you. Where?
Just with the spring water, a bit into the summertime, grass is getting out of hand, and we're kind of driving around, and, I mean, kind of what you said, perception is reality. So you start to see those small tensions with people not taking care of their lawns and maintenance, and it just really becomes obvious this time of year. So, I mean, in one city, last week, I actually got out of the car and measured already inches, to make sure that I could call the developer today, and I think Jim can go with the lawyer, and come to me, so he got a few calls and buried. But regarding that topic, I would like to say people are very making a pain in the butt, if you do not cut your grass and keep up with this. So that's changing fences that are disrepair, you're actually going to draw continually, and grass cutting. I think it's just important, and those are small steps that we can do, but I'll keep my word with you, I think. And then I also talked to IRG and the tree center behind, we have known, the Y Y, there's about six dead trees, you have, there's a lot of times are fir trees, and they are, they are being replaced. I think there was a warranty on those trees that they have, and they're all kind of being replaced. You've seen the dead area, that's what that is.
You talked to someone out there.
Yeah, that's nice.
Did they say, or, yeah, did they say anything about adding more trees over by the retention area? They talk about putting more pines over there?
Well, they replaced those, was that initially on, were they supposed to be more than that, or are you there?
Okay. Let's discuss it, yeah, I'll talk to her.
Okay.
You go for Judy.
Okay.
Keesley.
Since we were talking about the schools so much tonight, I just wanna say, Mayor and I had children graduate from Hoover on Saturday, and it was an awesome day, and it was fun, our day was crazy, and it was really a great day for everyone. I know we have school more than her, she's speaking, but she actually gave my son his diploma, so I'm excited, it was a great day.
I wanted to say a special thank to Eric and his team, I got a call from some folks in Ardenwood, and they were concerned about some additional tracks that had been left outside. They called me in good morning, and I called them right back, and by that time, before lunch, the folks from the nuisance, nuisance team had already been out to photograph it, and made comments, and then had followed up on it too. So I just wanted to say a special thank to Eric. That is gonna do as much to continue to improve and keep our capabilities as good as they can be, just following up with things.
Yeah, just to back that up, Eric has done a terrific job, I mean, calling him back, and he says, hey, Mark and I were out here this morning, Mark and I were doing this, and talk to Mark, he's continually keeping us updated, and, I mean, those are the small things that we talk about, if we can get on some of these problems, and Eric's doing a great job.
So I wanted to say a special thank.
Yes.
Okay, Governor, Sheriff? Just taking back what Stephanie said, sometimes we think the negative side, I wanted to state also, that we have some beautiful homes, beautiful yards, so many people take so much, the majority, let's just say, 90-some percent of it. So we have a wonderful community that does take care of a lot of stuff that they should. I mean, you look at the flowers, and the, the dogwood trees are blooming and everything, so I have to kudos to the people who do this, and we really care so much, that now you care, that's for good, it's all meaningful. So let's keep that in mind, because we sometimes want to go to the fixing side, we want to fix things, it's a good thing, so. I don't want to take anything, but I'm not sure what Doug said, I gave a duck in the pool today, I went by the pool, and we had some discussion, we're gonna talk about that, of course, I don't want to make that. We had a meeting with the pool folks last week, with the mine C A, and the people that are getting pool ready, and spent some hours, and about a week, and it, I went by it today, the water's in, looks really good, a lot of things are not yet, and we have.
Sply. Right, Sply.
There are some things that are not up yet, that may not be in the first week. The grass right now, there is, there's really water in that, and it is essential, I mean, I mean, you can't grow grass in February. So they did plant the grass, it's coming along, these technicians made great strides in about five days, so hopefully we have some sun, everything, and we'll be cording on some areas where you still have to dirt it. When you almost completely redo a pool, you're gonna have that problem, so you can't afford to dirt. So that's just some of the growing things we're gonna have with folks out there, and we'll make sure that they see that, and, you know, it's, we're gonna apologize for that, first, but that's part of the deal, that we have to make this wonderful pool with, and that's what we're gonna do. But it looks really good, and, so. But it looks really good, and, uh, so the mine C A's been, of course, uh, you know, trying to take things up to their standards, and, and we, uh, we want that as much as we can. But there are, there are going to happen issues the first, maybe, so, but we're still gonna have a wonderful pool, and it looks beautiful out there. I, since our last discussion last week, had a lot of big comments about possible shelter over there off these medical, like Dogwood, so I've had a lot of people say that's a great idea, that area's not used. So let's, uh, we'll discuss that a little bit more in our, in our next session, but let's keep that in mind. And then tomorrow, uh, I'm gonna be meeting with the superintendent, and we're gonna get him to tour the city tomorrow. So I know a couple of us, anybody who wants to join in on that, or, and all the departments, be aware, I'm gonna be coming on and introducing, uh, just when I work to all of you, so, uh, anybody who wants to get in on that, or let me know, uh, favorite meeting, or wanting to, places you want to take you, so we'll welcome you to the city, make sure you understand what we are, what you say. And that's it?
Of course. Just to follow up, yeah, was Tim Davis with you?
Today, looking, okay.
Doing some stuff, always, I, I talked about it a couple of weeks ago, uh, the small slides I'm going back. That was one of the first things, the small, that was one of the first things that we put away. Yeah, it's just, it doesn't need the, the, the totes anymore, and it really was long tooth, long tooth, really, it needed replaced, so we're gonna wait on that. Um, that was one of the first things, and I was elected, and we got done with the grass, proud of that, so the kids run around, and go and do that little, that little swag. Uh, the diet awards will come back, it's gonna be a couple of weeks, as you know, we're, we've had a grandfather, we're using that, that option to hopefully re, reinstall. So they'll be ran new, but, uh, you know, the same meters, uh, but hopefully we bring them back, but Abe will be obviously not be there for you. I, I follow about the grass, and you're right, you know, when any, we do any renovation, there's gonna be a couple pickups, uh, to get through the first couple of weeks, but Abe, we're proud of that. Let's have a nice, hot summer, so we can really utilize this pool.
I see numberships, so.
I had no idea that was.
See, how we sell out numberships.
Why, they are talking about buying some blowups too, it has a spice to it, so that might be something they might say out there also, so they got some really cool things scheduled to get going.
I was there sitting about my membership, there were two other people there at the same time, so hopefully there are more than three.
And I know, we, we have a lot of great housing, you know, that, we wanna keep it that way, obviously, we want it, we don't want it deteriorate, you know, to the point that, uh, we got major problems, so it's good we discussed this, and hopefully find a compromise. And, um, Eric's great, as we know, and Mark, but we just need a couple more of them sometimes to get through the paperwork, because we wear many hats in this city, because we're so efficient, uh, with our workforce, and Mayor, may I ask you again, you know, maybe we can look at the budget, see what we can do, get some additional whole type personnel, there's, like, that too, there, running around, not just for the housing issues, but also for the, the, the home issues too, so hopefully we can start moving that direction, talking about the budget, and I think that's, needs to come in the forefront here, and look at that a little more closer, and get that done, so, thank you.
Alright, uh, a couple things, as far as the schedule tonight, we have a, another special committee meeting directly after this, I'm going to adjourn out of this, go directly into that, so if any of you folks want to stick around and talk, should be no more than five minutes, we're just gonna be talking about bids. And, uh, so, don't leave after we adjourn out of this first meeting, if you wanna talk to us. And I want to thank Eric too, Eric saying to me, he, he got back to me, uh, pretty quick, all three times I called him this past week, for, uh, homes that had the grass growing, and it was done the next day, and he was on top of it, so I greatly appreciate that.
So, that's it, Laura, no reports, Director Fonte?
Uh, just good things, uh, we had our second extraction of the data for the income tax going to the data, so that's going on, so, uh, this is, um, June, we tell, we know it's going to run out this week on Thursday, we'll see a normal increase which is tied to C P I, and that's per, per bonus, um, late, uh, fourteenth, nineteen thirteen. And we have the auditors in, and also, um, that's it.
Thank you. Director, Mr. Smith?
Uh, your residents, uh, so we've got electric aggregation letters, uh, probably starting at the end of last week. Uh, we have a three-year lock-in price of five point three eight cents for a couple of hour. We do have, uh, some things on the webpage under the residence section there, it's a starting point, that's our aggregation, if you, you know, have a resident that beat that price, fine, and if they wanna join ours, fine, you can opt out of it, there's no charge on that, so. Uh, Memorial Day Parade is gonna kick off at nine o'clock, and then, of course, the ceremony follows that, uh, at Bitter Park. And Saturday, June fourth, uh, registration's in aid, it starts at nine o'clock, and that's Mayor's fishing radio, so we always have a really good turnout there, so, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, um, and the fishing party that was started by Mayor Dave Johnson, I think forty-four years ago.
Wow.
So it's been going on for a long, long time, and a lot of people were bringing their, their kids, their grandkids, and they were, they were tending, I don't know, kids. So it really is a very, very positive event. Um, and also, uh, we do have our school board members, Julie Cross is our audience, and you did a very, as, uh, Martin, he's like, mentioned, I agree with her, you may not have heard, but I don't know much of speaking at the time, but it was a great graduation ceremony. Very nice, you gave out the diplomas along with the other, um, school board members, but it was really, really nice, and very emotional, and that's good, it's a wide range, but, um, so, very proud of our school system, and we're, we're opposed to. Uh, also, the, um, uh, we've got our city survey back, we had really very positive results, so we wanna present that, uh, all of the council members really in the street had, uh, looked at the results, what I'm trying to do is tally everything, uh, if you have any, you will be getting it. Um, when the survey was sent out, most of, we asked the residents to respond, and we would say, please rank our police department. Excellent, good, fair, or, or don't know. We went through all of the city, um, services, and then we allowed the comments, the good news is that we had fourteen percent of the residents responded to the survey. So if you look at surveys that are sent out, fourteen percent, really, really high. We had a nice cross-section of all the residents in the community, um, you know, from their twenties, thirties, forties, fifties, uh, that responded, and, uh, the good news is, is that like our police department, ninety-three percent gave our police department either good or excellent rating. Fire, EMS, ninety-two percent, good, excellent rating. Uh, the waste and recycling, over ninety-four percent, good, excellent rating. I would say that the, the waste hauling that were goods than excellent compared to our, uh, police and fire. But we were trying to find a way to easily categorize that. The one area that was very high, if you look at all, like, every three years, we send out a survey, so we did one in two thousand nine, did one in two thousand, uh, twelve, and this one was supposed to be the end of twenty fifteen, but was actually pre-built in twenty sixteen. You'll see that there is very little change, um, the percentages went up slightly for those volume categories, but maybe one or two percent. But the one area that had the, uh, the most significant difference was I don't know, or unsure, for a particular service, and, um, when you look at that result tied in with the number of people that said they would like to see a city newsletter, eighty-three percent responded that they would like to have a city newsletter. Uh, Jackson Township doesn't, Plain Township, the city of Camden doesn't, so, uh, night crimes, and also Jane House is working on putting together a city newsletter. Uh, we're not doing advertisements, any of that, a large percentage of that would be paid for, grant money that we, that we get from, uh, different sources, and we wanna send that out, and we're looking at doing it twice a year. We were thinking quarterly, the problem is quarterly, um, you know, we think most of the information that we're sending out is not going to, it's not like news, it's, it's information for the residents. So if we send it out twice a year, we're, we're thinking about sending out, um, we'll reduce the postage, but we can have four pages, so it's kind of like taking, um, four quarterly newsletters and just putting them into two, so the same volume, but then we'll reduce the postage, and, and really, this should be a variable, uh, any cost to the city, because we'll utilize grant dollars, if we have for that. So, um, we have, you know, a framework that we're looking at, and it's really just covering the various departments, the city services, and this is all information, all information based for the residents. Alright, so that's, that's good news, and we hope to add it out, like, at the, um, beginning of summer, and then another one right before, uh, Christmas. We would do that every year, okay? So that's, uh, good news on our, you know? Thank you, everybody. We're a city engineer, we're a great city engineer.
That's it?
That's it. Great, I'm glad.
Um, kind of a whole lot of your work projects are starting, uh, repairing the streets. And repairing, uh, so, uh, as you, if you have any questions on any projects, feel free to call me. Try to let you know we started on Sunny Field this morning.
Uh, as it takes to the woodside, whether they can come through and do the ceiling between those white brick and the asphalt.
Um, I'll find out, and I also suppose all the manholes need to be adjusted.
Yeah.
If some that are sitting up, uh, go ahead and the contractors, the pension, they protect, and I'll call those out, so we can tell money to do it. That's my, that's responsibility, that we get to take as a city house.
So there's only a total of there?
I counted about five or six.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, put those up.
Yeah, that's it, and thank you, Matt, clerk. Alright, I'm calling this council, we've got our table as a juror, so, thanks, uh, we'll save some average here. We're back into, maybe the whole, especially for me, the whole agenda, Monday, the twenty-third, at eight forty-five. Clerk, please call roll over this table. Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here. All present, hey, folks, folks, excuse me, folks. We're in a little meeting, if you wanna talk, you can go outside, or you can have to sit down, we can start a special committee meeting. Bye, George.
I'm gonna abstain from garbage matter, it looks difficult.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, but, you, you're. Alright, Chairman, uh, yes, I'm witness of a newer, uh, contract with, uh, garbage, rubbish recycle source, so I'm gonna give my, my, to chart the, and, and all of the, uh, negotiations, so can I tell us what about this, or?
About our three years, uh, term on, so, we're gonna do bids, and see what we get, uh, again, everybody has been satisfied with what we have, but people bid relatively the same, for the same type of services and stuff, that's why people think of one, so, uh, from this one, it looks like you want, please bring it back to council once every bid.
I have, uh, met with an elderly resident who's a retired, our teacher at St. Luke's, and she took a picture and is working on painting, entitled Woodrow on Wednesdays, which is the day we, we have our trash out there, because she's so excited about how there is trash in the, uh, lands. I'm not sure it's the name, I, you know, she has a nice child on that one, but, uh, it's, uh, Jenny, she was just putting it, uh, uh, yeah, oh yeah. Anyway, yes, obviously appreciate the extent of the, it's just.
So the next step is then to hit the bids, put it out, if we see bids, how many do we usually get, just?
I think last time we had three of them came in.
So we're good with that, any other questions?
I was just wondering if, uh, when you set up the bids, does part of the response have to do with how much data is for recycling? You know, like the bid setups for that?
Like the package deal.
Yeah, the package deal, because, you know, we want a lot of, we want a lot of money back for recycling, since we're such good recyclers.
Yeah, they would, uh, pay it back to cover our billing expenses, we put that in there, recycling right now, though, are way down, yeah, where they were twenty thirteen when we sent the bid out, so, you can track that, there's a way to track that, and it's way down, so.
So when we get our bids back, we'll spell out all that, so you know what the plus and the minus of our issue, period.
Yeah, we, we look at all, so we know what's the lowest in the best.
I think we're gonna continue with the recet, the perceptual way, uh, for.
That's what we put in the bid.
Yeah, that's in the bid, similar to what we're doing now, whatever it's, you know, they just did a whole run, so.
That's reduced a lot of costs, or, uh, a lot of, uh, I think.
So, Mike, Mike said a lot of the job, I'll continue to do that, any, any questions? Okay, I'll put that on then.
Because it's a franchise agreement, which means essentially anyone that wishes to have sanitation residential has to approve this, whatever charter applies, it came to asking for purchase, so you need three readings.
Okay, I can put the agenda, we have a little, uh, fair stat, uh, equals excess, fair.
I think Eric. You know, it's a super. Yeah, and I can sign that, too. About what's about.
Yeah, that's right.
You don't have to. How was this looking without some of the, you know?
Oh, no, this is, this is, all of people. I'm worried that.
This is kind of a, this is like, so we're safe.
Yeah.
We're going to get up early after all that.